All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30. We will call our court meeting for June to order. We'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening. We're proud to have each and every one of you with us. And we really mean that. We appreciate you coming out and showing interest, being with us tonight. So, we would like to go ahead and begin at this time, and we'll ask Ms. Lisa if she would to call our roll, please.
Joel Akers.
Here.
Terry Bell.
Here.
Morris Bond.
Here.
Carl Bolden.
Here.
Teddy Boyd.
Here.
Sally Brock.
Here.
Wayne Copeland. Clinton Hill. Earl Jones. Ron Lee.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Charles Morgan. Dwight O'Neal.
Here.
Gary Prater. Kenneth Rogers. George Smart.
Yes ma'am.
Bessie Smitsen. Diane Starkey.
Here.
Les Trotman.
Here.
Herschel Wells. Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Melissa Yancy.
Here.
Bob Young.
Present.
Twenty present, four absent.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have twenty present and four absent. This time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand, if you would please, and remain standing. We're going to have our opening prayer, and then, as always, the meeting following our prayer, we'll say our pledge to the flag. This time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire to lead us in our invocation, please.
Dear Lord, we want to thank you, Lord, first of all, for the privilege of prayer. Lord, the opportunity that we have, Lord, to ask and know that you answer prayers. Lord, we pray that you will be with us tonight as we conduct the county's business. Lord, help us to do it in a way that is in the best interest of our constituents and our districts and in our county. Lord, just be with all the people that are out tonight, Lord, for sickness, and, Lord, just continue to be with our soldiers as they fight for our freedom, enabling us to do what we do tonight, Lord. We thank you for all your many blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and you may be seated. Okay, at this time, we would like to adopt our docket for the evening, the business that we'll be conducting. You've each received your packages. I hope you've had an opportunity to review all of our business, and I'd entertain a motion, have a motion by Commissioner Morris Bond, I have a second by Commissioner George Smart to adopt our docket as presented. Is there any discussion on our docket? From anyone? Being none? All in favor of adopting the docket as presented? Let it be known by saying aye, please. Opposed? And it passes. We have set our docket for the evening. Thank you. Next, we would like to call on our court clerk to read the minutes from our previous meeting. This time, please.
Make the motion to spend the reading of the minute.
Have a motion to spend the reading of the minutes. Second on that, by, that motion was by Commissioner Teddy Boyd, second by Commissioner Yancy. So, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Being none? All in favor of this? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. We'll move right into our elected officials or departmental reports, and first up tonight, and the first order of business in your package is our finance report. And I'd like to recognize our finance director on this, Ms. Linda Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
Moving to approve. Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Smart, and I heard a second. Was that you, Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
May I use you as the second? With a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Are there any questions concerning our finance report? If not, all those in favor of adopting the finance report as presented? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? And that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hillis. We appreciate that. Next will be our agriculture report, and we have Ms. Lidle with us this evening. Ms. Hill, a good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You should have a copy of my report. And I'd also like to introduce you all to our latest hire, and Shay, if you will stand, this is Shay Davis, and she is from the University of Tennessee, 4-H position. It's our full-time, and we're now fully staffed in the extension department.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Shay.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Have a motion to adopt the agriculture report by Commissioner Trotman, have a second on that by Commissioner Boyd. So, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Hill?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had a second. I thought, I thought you had a question. That's okay. That's fine. That's fine. Okay. With no discussion, then, all in favor of adopting the report as presented? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hillis. It's good to have you with us tonight. All right, next will be the airport, and we'd like to recognize Mr. Richard Crawford. How are you this evening, sir?
I am well. How are you?
We're good. Good to have you with us, Richard.
Joe was decided to take the night off, so you all have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I'll answer that at this time for you.
Motion to adopt by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Trotman, with a motion and a second. Are there any questions concerning the airport report for Mr. Crawford? Being none? All right. All those in favor of adopting the report as presented? Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that report is adopted. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it very much. Next will be our codes environmental department and Mr. Nolan Meng. Nolan, good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have a copy of my report. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Moving to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Smart, second by Commissioner Ken Martin, with a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Being none? All those in favor of adopting the environmental codes department report as presented? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Nolan, thank you, sir. EMA and Mr. Jim, good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Motion accepted.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Teddy Boyd, second by Commissioner Earl Jones, with motion and second. I'll ask for questions or discussion. Being none? All those in favor of adopting the EMA report? Please let it be known by saying aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Jim, thank you, sir. EMS and Mr. Brian Jennings. BJ, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. Be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time about my report.
Okay. Motion to approve. Do I have that? By Commissioner Lee, second. Commissioner Boyd, motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion concerning the ambulance report? All right, being none? All those in favor of adopting the report as presented? Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. And last, under our departmental reports, is the IDB, and we have Mr. Don Alexander with us this evening. Don, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good to have you with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county. You have my report. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Smart, second by Commissioner Trotman, with a motion and a second. Let's open the floor up, if there are any questions for Don or any discussion on his report. Don, maybe, for myself, maybe just an update on DN Plastics. And obviously, if we travel 55, we see the progress that's being made, but maybe an update on that, and also on San Sin, if you would, please. I know that's probably in your report, but maybe additional information that's not included here.
Yes, sir. I'm sure that probably 99% of the communities in Tennessee would love to have the structure that we have right now with three viable manufacturing facilities working for us at the same time. We're very fortunate. In exact answer to your question, DN Plastics is moving along very nicely. Both the contractor and the company are, seem to be pleased at this time on the progress that they're making. It is possible for the company itself to move some of their equipment in if they wish to at this point. However, the company itself is wishing to kind of hold off for a little bit. Consultant is advising them to do so, both from a security standpoint and a weatherization, if you will, type situation. The Tri-State has been very willing to put security there if that were the case. That is not, you know, the security is really not the issue. They're just waiting to weatherize the building. That looks like it could happen within this coming week if everything goes right along that line. DN Plastics, I feel like, might be producing product here by the end of July. San Sin, we're working very, very stringently toward getting a notice of completion on that particular project. That one, too, is, they're wanting to be producing in our area and creating jobs for us just as quickly as they possibly can. We have just received the notice of completion on the first part of the MPC project, so they are doing very nicely.
And a follow-up to that, if I may, I guess the question that everybody inevitably always asks, are we getting close enough? Do we have, do we know where these two facilities are going to be hiring? For the, for the general public to know? Are they going to be using some of our local staffing agencies? Or will that information be coming forth in the near future? Do we know that?
For, for, I think for both of them, actually. They are trying to hire the key positions locally, and they would be full-time employees. The key positions, then, will be responsible for hiring their lower tier, you know, just under them, and then the other tier of employees underneath that. So, it's a methodical method that they're using at this time, and as far as I can tell, so far, that is working.
Okay.
We don't have an overabundance of skilled labor here, and we're hoping that they will increase and cause a great deal of growth in our community.
Okay.
But that's, that's the way that I know it right now. That is, of course, more of their entrepreneurial secrets than I'm privy to in a lot of instances there.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like maybe the management staff, they're going to be hiring themselves locally, and then, and then based on the scenario that you just described, that they're possibly going to be receiving applications or resumes themselves at the plant through the key people that they've put into place?
Right. I do know that they've already started receiving the resumes in. As far as the key hires, that's what they've been working on initially because they feel like that's one of the main things to drive the rest of the success for the company.
Right.
Is to get those key positions hired.
Right.
And then, those positions will be, will come underneath their hierarchy.
Right. Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Don on anything? All right, if not, we already have a motion and a second on the report. There's no further discussion? Everybody in favor of adopting the industrial board report as presented? Please let it be known by saying aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Don, thank you very much.
Very grateful for all your support.
Appreciate everything you're doing. Okay, that concludes all of our elected officials/departmental reports for this evening. Before we move into committee reports, Jeff, do you care, could you, that side door, could you prop that open with a chair, somebody, and maybe this door also here, Levy or somebody? Tommy, do y'all care, maybe see if you can swing those doors open? I don't think there's that much noise out in the hallway, that that's going to be a disturbance to us. Let's see if we can, let's see if we can get a little air flowing through here, maybe, before we continue. I don't know how it is out there, but it's getting, it's getting pretty toasty up here, okay? All right, thank you very much, and maybe that will help as we continue through our business for the evening. Okay, under committee reports, we'll move into that. Budget and finance, like to recognize, if I may, you didn't know I was going to do it, but Commissioner Bell, may I recognize you for budget and finance, please?
All budget and finance committee has to report. We're working on the 2014-15 budget and should have it put together in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Building and grounds, like to recognize Commissioner Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building and grounds has nothing to report, other than air conditioning. We've been working up to courthouse, putting in some new, another new air conditioner, and, of course, we got some air conditioner problems at the health department, and unfortunately, we got some air conditioning problems here in this building, so it just, it just seems like when it starts, it don't stop, so we will work to get that fixed, maybe tomorrow, hopefully.
Based on this evening, we may be calling a meeting in the near future, sounds like. Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bolden. Economic and agriculture development, Commissioner Trotman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Ms. Lidle for following up and giving us a new 4-H person who I'm sure will be highly successful and welcome to our program here. Other than that, we have nothing to report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Education, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, education has nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Under financial management, I will report to you that our next financial management meeting will be Thursday, June the 26th, Thursday, June the 26th. If you'd like to mark your calendars for that, at 3:30 in the conference room. 3:30 in the conference room for our next meeting to be awarding bids for financial management. Health and welfare, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an item coming up later on the docket. Other than that, I have nothing new or exciting to report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Highway and bridge, Commissioner Prater is not with us. I normally would recognize, in his absence, Bessie, Commissioner Smitsen, Commissioner Jones, are you aware of anything highway? Who else is highway and bridge? And Commissioner Young, I think, is the other member there? Okay? Nothing there that you're aware of? We've got the road list later that we'll be doing, but nothing else, other than that. Thank you, sir. Policy and personnel, like to recognize Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for following up in the first panel.
Thank you, sir. Last, under our committee reports, is the safety committee, like to recognize Commissioner Teddy Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety committee has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Under special committee reports, jail oversight and Commissioner Wells' absence, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Morris Bond, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the jail today, we had 273 inmates, which 80 of them was ladies. That's all.
Two seventy-three, and of that, 80 are ladies. The number's up, unfortunately, isn't it? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bond. And last, under our committee reports, special committee is Reed District King, like to recognize Commissioner Smart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking with Donna Smith last week, I suppose, no real changes that she's looking at at this time. Of course, as close as we are to the general election, wouldn't be appropriate, but it seems like everything's in good, in good order.
Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the court, this time, that concludes all of our committee reports, so we'll be moving into our docket for the evening. We do not have any old business, so under new business, item number one this evening, I'd like to recognize, to present this item of business for your consideration, our Director of Finance, Ms. Linda Hillis. Please, Ms. Hillis, would you mind to do that for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 14, 2014, is a resolution to adopt a continuing budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014. This has passed budget and finance committee and financial management committee, and it's for your consideration tonight.
Moving to adopt. Move to adopt by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Bond. Is there any discussion? Being none? Ms. Scott, would you call the roll for us, please, ma'am?
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Item number one passes 20 to zero. Item number two on our docket for the evening is the resolution for adopting the road list for the county, and in Commissioner Prater's absence, and I know I'm catching you off-guard, but Commissioner Jones, would you mind to present that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 1624. And it's this new road list, and the committee met to adopt this.
Okay, and it passed the highway and bridge committee, okay? All right, you place that in the form of a motion to adopt this. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Akers, I have a motion and a second, and we do have our road superintendent with us this evening. Levy, thank you for coming. Good to have you with us. If there's any questions? So, with a motion and a second for the county's new road list for the coming year, if there's any questions or discussion from anyone, we can get those answered. If not, all right. All in favor, then, of adopting the county road list as presented? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Item number three on our docket for the evening, like to recognize Commissioner Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The building and grounds met on April 11th, 2014, to consider a lease agreement with the Middle Tennessee Nursemen's Association for office space in the administrative building here in this building, and this is a current three-year lease, and building and grounds voted four to zero to accept this lease again through the Nursemen's Association, and I so move on that, and if you need to know the amount every year that they pay, why, it's $5,100 a year, it's $425 a month, and I so move to, on this lease agreement for three more years.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolden. We have a motion, second by Commissioner Erwell. I'm sorry, Commissioner Starkey, did you motion? Let me get Commissioner Starkey. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I'll thank you for the motion. Motion and a second. Is there any question or discussion concerning the lease? Being none? Ms. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I may have a conflict interest in this, but in no way will it affect my vote.
Thank you, sir.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty yes.
Item number three passes 20 to zero. Item number four on our docket, like to recognize Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four, Resolution Number 17, 2014, a resolution to designate the Warren County Planning Commission as the Board of Appeals for Code Violation and Hearing Panel for Overgrown Vegetation. I accumulate a degree violation issued by the Warren County Code Environmental Department. On May the 29th, the Policy and Personnel Committee met and considered the designation of Board of Appeals and Hearing Panel and Board of Code Environmental Department, the Board of Appeals, Building Code Violation and Hearing Panel for Overgrown Vegetation, and accumulate a degree. Violations are required by state mandate, and based on, from the county attorney, the committee voted three all that night, to designate the planning commission to serve in these three capacities. You have a copy of that resolution on your desk tonight when you sit down. I'll just read the caption again. The resolution to designate the Warren County Planning Commission as the Board of Appeals for all notices of building code violations and the Hearing Panel for all notices of violations of Tennessee Code and Act 5 days, one day, 415, issued by the Warren County Code and Environmental Department. And I so move.
Okay. All right, I have a motion, and I have a second by Commissioner Carl Bolden, and as Commissioner Martin stated, let me also repeat, if I may, because you did receive, I think, a draft copy in your package, but the final draft of this, as our county attorney was working on it, is on your desk, is the final draft of this resolution that we are passing tonight. So, with that, I have some discussion. Like to recognize Commissioner Dwight O'Neal.
You see the paragraph coming down, John, I just cut it away.
Okay.
You've got 150 largely assessed fees appeal, and you have X amount going to cost the publication of this appeal. Then it says the remainder of the appeal, the fees will be remitted to the Board of Appeals. Do we have a fund established of that, or will that remainder go into the general fund?
It would go to the board for serving as the board for payment, for their services for serving as the Board of Appeals.
And how will those funds be designated?
I assume that we would just draft a check out of the account like we would for a committee meeting?
It would have to be budgeted.
Right.
Will that distribution of state benefits address any questions?
Right. Right. So, we will, we will just put that in the budget, and if they have a meeting and there's payment of any kind, and just like a committee meeting would be, it would be paid to the be paid to the Planning Commission.
Uh, yes, it would have to be budgeted if approved tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would have to be budgeted if it's approved tonight. It would be budgeted, and then that would be, that would be a line item in the budget, and if we received that money, it would just be flow-through, we'd receive it, and then it would just, less what we use for advertisement would go to the Planning Commission.
Correct, we would have to receive a, uh, basically a statement from the Board of Appeals.
But will those funds go back into the general fund, and then they be distributed? That's my question.
Yes, it would have to be deposited with the trustee's office, and then, um, the expenditure would, um, be taken out of the general fund.
But those fees have not been established, or have they been appropriated as of now?
No.
Correct, correct. Thank you, Ms. Hillis, thank you. Did that answer your question, everything completely? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neal. Any further discussion? From anyone? All right. If not, Ms. Lisa, would you call the row, please?
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
No.
Morris Bond.
No.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
No.
Wayne Copeland.
No.
Clinton Hill.
No.
Earl Jones.
No.
Ron Lee.
No.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
No.
Dwight O'Neal.
No.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
No.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
No.
Melissa Yancy.
No.
Bob Young.
No.
Anybody want to change their vote?
Okay, item number four fails, seven yes and thirteen no. Did I state that correct?
That's correct.
Seven yes and thirteen no. Item number four fails. Item number five, like to recognize Ms. Hillis again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number Eighteen, Two Thousand Fourteen. It's a resolution to accept the Warren County School System Federal Programs Budget as presented by the appropriate federal agencies without requiring approval of the legislative body of Warren County. The Budget and Finance Committee met on June the third to consider the resolution. Uh, the Financial Management Committee met on June the tenth. We, this is the same, uh, item of business that we have done, uh, since two thousand and nine, and, uh, is to hold, not hold up funds, uh, for the, the federal programs, uh, schools' budget.
Okay, and that is presented for their information, so at this time, I would entertain a motion from the floor. Motion approved by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Michael Martin, motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, being none, Ms. Lisa, would you call the row, please?
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Item number five passes twenty to zero. Item number six, once again, Ms. Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution Number Nineteen Dash Two Thousand Fourteen. A resolution to approve a three-year lease agreement between Nova Copy and the Warren County School District for copiers for the Warren County School System. The Financial Management Committee met on May the fifteenth to consider the bids. Um, the bids for the copiers had been advertised, opened, and reviewed prior to the May fifteenth meeting, and following consideration and comparison of the bids, the committee voted unanimously to award the bid to Nova Copy. There should be a copy of the lease attached to the resolution.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Earl Jones, second by Commissioner Starkey, motion and a second, is there any questions or discussion? If not, Ms. Lisa, if you would, please.
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Item number six passes twenty to zero. Item number seven, like to recognize Commissioner Terry Bell.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution Number Twenty, Two Thousand Fourteen, is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for a con- comprehensive school safety initiative grant through the National Institute of Justice on behalf of the Warren County School System. Application for the, for a comprehensive school safety initiative grant was considered at a joint meeting of education and safety on June the fourth, and it passed both committees unanimously, and I so move we recommend.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bell, uh, second by Commissioner Carl Bolden, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Being none, Ms. Lisa, would you call the row, please?
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Item number six passes twenty to zero. Item number seven, like to recognize Commissioner Terry Bell.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution Number Twenty, Two Thousand Fourteen, is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for a com- comprehensive school safety initiative grant through the National Institute of Justice on behalf of the Warren County School System. Application for the, for a comprehensive school safety initiative grant was considered at a joint meeting of education and safety on June the fourth, and it passed both committees unanimously, and I so move we recommend.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bell, uh, second by Commissioner Carl Bolden, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Being none, Ms. Lisa, would you call the row, please?
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Item number eight passes twenty to zero. Item number nine, once again, working hard tonight, Ms. Hillis.
I wish Herschel was here. Um, this is Budget Amendment Number AF Dash Two Thousand Thirteen Dash Two. This is for the ambulance fund. Uh, it also passed Budget and Finance Committee unanimously and Financial Management Committee unanimously, and there is a copy attached for your review.
Motion approved by Commissioner Teddy Boyd, second by Commissioner Ron Lee, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, Ms. Lisa, if you would, please.
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Uh, yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Item number nine passes twenty to zero. Item number ten, like to recognize Commissioner Sally Brock. Again, Ms. Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, um, the Health and Welfare Committee met on May twenty-ninth, uh, to review some applications, um, that were, uh, sent in for two part-time positions with animal control. And after a lot of deliberation, we voted three oh to recommend Brandy Bolden and Dietra Kester for the two positions, contingent upon, excuse me, satisfactory drug screen results, MVR report, and, uh, the confirmation of you all. And as far as I know, everything has been confirmed, um, and so we're, uh, asking for your vote tonight, and I so move.
Okay, replacing those two names of Brandy Bolden and Dietra Kester before the court, and I have a motion to that effect, I have a second on that by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, being none, all of those in favor of confirmation of these two individuals for part-time positions at animal control, please let me know on the same eye. Uh, opposed, and motion carries. Thank you. That was item number ten. Item number eleven, be recognizing Ms. Lisa Scott to present a, uh, bond for the Finance Director, and that bond, uh, along with the resolution that we, uh, had on our docket earlier this evening, that bond is on your desk as well, each of you have that bond, so at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Scott.
The bond is for the Finance Director, Linda G. Hillis, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and it is good until, um, July first, two thousand and fifteen, and I just asked it be approved.
Okay, all right, do I hear a motion to that effect? Uh, not, Commissioner Bolden was nodding his head yes, and I'll give Commissioner Yancy on the second, multiple seconds, thank you all for that, with a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, Ms. Lisa, if you would, please, call the row.
Joel Akers.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Sally Brock.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Clinton Hill.
Yes.
Earl Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Dwight O'Neal.
Yes.
Kenneth Rogers.
Yes.
George Smart.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Les Trotman.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Melissa Yancy.
Yes.
Bob Young.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty yes.
Okay, item number eleven passes twenty to zero. And item number twelve, for our notary list, once again, Ms. Lisa.
I laid the, the, um, list on your desk, this is the list for the notaries. April Kirby, Charlotte Vaughn, Tammy Boynton, Erica Sugaroo, Valerie Haddock, Michael D. Griffith, Johnny P. Newby, Kay Penlam, Becky Glover, Linda Roller, David C. Christian, Mickey L. Craighead, and Patricia L. Dennis.
Okay, you've heard the list of name, motion to accept the name, the list of names as presented, Commissioner Teddy Boyd, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Morris Bond, motion and a second to approve the list of notaries as presented, all those in favor of adopting this list, please let me know on the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. With the court's permission, could we go back just for one moment, please, beg your indulgence to item number four? I would just like to make an announcement there on that. Uh, this court acted in two thousand, in the year two thousand, to pa- to pass a private act in this county to, uh, regulate, uh, junkyards and scrap yards and overgrown vegetation. And, uh, it was approximately two thousand six to two thousand seven, before a department was ever established, uh, to begin to try to enforce the act that was passed in two thousand. And we have been working diligently to try to come into compliance on everything that was, that is within that private act. One of the things that is within that act, as you know, we are probably in our third year approximately of having a codes department, is that act calls for a, uh, appeals board or a hearing panel, uh, when our codes officer goes out and he makes a ruling, if someone disagrees with that ruling, our private act calls for the fact that they can petition for an appeal. This court passed that. We have no appeals board, we have no one for them to appeal before. And the Planning Commission had worked very hard to try to, or the Policy and Personnel Committee had worked very hard to try to come up with a plan to allow the Planning Commission to do so. So, we're going to need to establish a hearing panel for the codes and for the overgrown vegetation of some kind. So I simply say that to each of you, that if you have any suggestions, please, that falls underneath, uh, Commissioner Ken Martin's committee, unfortunately. But, uh, Commissioner Martin or myself, please, if you have any suggestions of that, obviously the resolution that we brought before you tonight failed, so we're going to leave here tonight still without a, uh, a, uh, appeals board or a hearing panel, and, and who would do that, where we, where individuals would go if they disagree with our codes officer? And, uh, we need to establish that, and we're still going to continue to work, certainly with the court, to, to get out everything in place that we need. So I ask you, if you have any suggestions, again, please, please let us know, we, we would truly, uh, entertain any suggestions or thought that you have to work with you on that, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't understand the hundred and fifty dollars, I could not look again, where, where's the money going to go?
We have to, if, if someone appeals the reason, well, one of the things, one of the things that we had to do, we, we asked our state, uh, planner, which is Tommy Lee, first of all, was the first step we took in working in conjunction with our county attorney, of where did he think would be the appropriate place for this to go? And he suggested the, uh, Planning Commission. So then, after we received that information from him, we went to the Planning Commission, because this does not fall underneath certainly their normal scope of, of, you know, job description of what they're to do. The Planning Commission said that they would be willing to do that, so basically, they, they would adjourn, uh, from their Planning Commission meeting, and then they would reconvene for whichever panel, if it was overgrown vegetation or codes, to hear that. And we would be required on an appeal of any kind to advertise it in the paper, so there would be a cost there to pay for that, and then whatever is left after the advertisement and the paper is paid for, the balance would go to that board to divide up for compensation for hearing that appeal. And also what that does, first of all, it doesn't cost the county any money, but second of all, it's going to be flow-through, but by creating a situation where it's a hundred and fifty dollars to appeal, uh, Commissioner Copeland, if you, if you do not put a, uh, an amount to it, everybody's going to be appealing, okay? If you put an amount to it, our thought process was, anyway, that we felt like that that would limit people to only people that felt like they had a serious reason to appeal, that it would cost a hundred and fifty dollars, and by doing that, if it costs twenty-five dollars to run the ad in the paper, and we don't know that, but whatever the ad costs, the balance of that would go to the Planning Commission for compensation for serving as that board, for them to divide.
Mr. Chairman.
So if they, uh, if they, 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 if they,[1488.99]
would limit people to only people that felt like they had a serious reason to appeal, that it would cost a hundred and fifty dollars, and by doing that, if it costs twenty-five dollars to run the ad in the paper, and we don't know that, but whatever the ad costs, the balance of that would go to the Planning Commission for compensation for serving as that board, for them to divide.
Mr. Chairman?
If they, 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 if they,